And staffing issues at some facilities that are more affected by the virus spread. The National Guard has already delivered critical P E P E and mostly those are masks at this point to Franklin County and us. Additionally, our liaison officer Angela Harris has worked to secure additional sanitizer for county operations. On the virus spread, we've been providing the county with vital information regarding the spread of the virus to Franklin County and discuss why we all need to critically assess the numbers that are presented through the state's website. And you'll notice since a lot of the press releases that go out, we take careful point to reference the state site and to encourage people to be good consumers of that information. When reviewing and reporting new numbers, because of our decreased emphasis on testing, as I've talked about, we are now looking at the number of EMS calls that appear to be virus-related and the number of confirmed virus-related deaths as our new measures since the state does not provide us with county of origin specific COVID-19 hospitalization numbers. We can get the overall numbers of hospitalizations for the state, but we can't get county-specific data yet. The other thing we've been doing is keeping everyone informed. We set up our center's phone line. That was set up before the E O C went live. That number's nine one nine four nine six eight one one three. We're responding to anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five calls a day at that center. We also have an email address that was set up. We're responding to on average two to up to ten emails a day over a variety of topics. We also made a video which I made and sent out and posted on our Facebook page for the Health Department. That video has now had over nine thousand views, so I'm very pleased and hopeful that that message went out to as many Franklin County residents as possible. We are trying to respond to a large number of questions. They're coming from businesses, nonprofit agencies, local elected officials, and county departments. I don't know about a Facebook page for Franklin County. I know that we post information on the county website and we reference the Facebook page. And I know that we've had over, we doubled the size of the number of people that have linked to our page, and I think we've actually tripled the number of people that are liking our page. So we've had a good impact with that, and I can't speak to the county, I can just speak to the Health Department's page. A lot of the questions relate to testing, personal protective equipment, and employee safety. We've also fielded a number of questions related to the county curfew, related to restaurants, people gathering, and things along those lines. And we're working very closely with our safety officers, Sheriff Winstead and his alternate safety officer Terry Wright. And we continue to man that information center. Regarding the county curfew, working with our Board of Commissioners Chair and the County Manager, the E O C has reached out to local officials to increase the level of social distancing in Franklin County and to improve our opportunity for decreasing the virus spread in the county. And the county curfew is a part of that measure. The last thing that I'll tell everyone is that we're having weekly full E O C meetings. Those meetings occur once per week. The E O C members are the Insane Commanders, and we rotate that responsibility. That is between myself, Tina Sweet, Lauren Pace, and Jeff Wright. I am the Public Information Officer, as I've mentioned. The Safety Officer is Kent Winstead and Terry Wright. Liaison Officer is Angela Harris and Kim Denton. Our Epidemiology Section Chief is Miranda Stallings. She's our Communicable Disease Nurse. Logistics Section Chief is Tina Sweet. Planning Section Chief is Lauren Pace and Joyce Barnes. Operations Section Chief is Jeff Wright and Missy Johnson. And Finance is Jamie Holtzman and Maddy May. I also have to recognize Lauren Pace for maintaining our Facebook page. She's done a phenomenal job of doing that. So as you can tell, the E O C has been very busy and actively working to address the impact of COVID-19 in Franklin County. We're going to remain open and working for the county until this crisis ends. But with that, are there any questions?
I have one.
Is that Mr. Schreiber?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Levine, my question leans more towards what you may feel is the cause and effect of the implementation of the curfew here in Franklin County.
In terms of, you mean, what is the impact of the curfew?
Correct. What, how much of an impact do you feel having the curfew has led to the ability for us to contain or to alleviate the spread of this virus as far as an overall contributor?
Right. At this point, I think it's kind of early to assess that. I can tell you that based on the overall level of compliance, that simple observation afforded everyone who cared to look, there was an overall lack of compliance with the executive orders. So, you know, regarding the gathering sizes and people gathering in various places around restaurants and various other places. So I can't really speak to the efficacy of it at this point. We are going to start to assess as best we can what kind of impact that's had. We're going to have at our next meeting of the E O C, we hope we'll be able to get some more input from the sheriff in terms of anything that he may have seen. We will also probably have an outreach effort to some of the local police departments to see what their thoughts are on this as well. Our hope was never to make this a police matter, at least mine was. And, you know, anything that I do and anything that I support is purely related to public health. And if there was a way that people in the middle who just needed a little extra nudge to recognize the importance of this, if they would comply by staying away from others who don't live in their house through those hours in particular, then it would be well worth it. The virus is so highly contagious that the more people congregate, the more likely it is to spread, and the more people that are vulnerable will get sick, and unfortunately a large number of them will die. And that's why we implemented this effort in the first place. I don't want our worst-case scenario to come up. So I'm not sure that we'll be able to get metrics that'll completely satisfy everyone in terms of how efficacious it was and it is. I won't be able to probably provide something that will be consistently accepted from everyone, but we are looking at that.
Do you feel that the curfews are really more effective in more populated areas where you've got a lot of more urban settings, more foot traffic, where people use a lot more public places, they have a public means of transportation, things of that area?
Well, I mean, I can tell you that people congregate in a variety of different places, and in larger populated areas, you're more likely to see them. You're less likely to see them in a rural area where people are spread out over further areas. But the number of gatherings that occur in backyards, the number of gatherings that occur at various places like hardware stores, they're impromptu, they're not organized, and they appear to be just people passing each other. But very quickly, they evolve into people socializing with each other. You know, one of the things that we saw last week when they had the prayer vigil, which I fully supported and I thought was a great, great effort. One of the things that we saw is despite the best efforts to keep people separated from each other, we saw in the video multiple people getting out of cars and bending and sitting and kneeling over flowers that had just been laid there from other people that didn't live in their house. That sets them up, unmasked people doing that. And so these are things that we don't think about. We don't think about just saying hey to somebody at the mailbox. You know, there are impromptu gatherings that occur. A lot of these aren't going to occur in a public place where people are going to be readily observed. And so we really want the message to get out to everyone that we're not looking to enforce, we're looking for people to do the right thing here, and that's to stay away from each other as much as you possibly.
Right. Are you surprised at the gathering that occurred there at 401 Highway where the death of the three young people were?
I went past that on my way home that night, and it filled me with sadness for the loss of life that occurred there, and it filled me with even more sadness for the number of people that were potentially exposing themselves by virtue of hanging there and honoring those people that died. And I thought, what an ultimate tragedy this would be, even one of those people ended up contracting the virus in time honoring people who had lost their life. So yes, that's one area for sure.
But that was the actual gathering you were referencing to is what I was, because I was there, that's why I ask if that was the one you were speaking to?
That's one of them, yep.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it, Scott.
Other questions? Thank you again, Mr. Levine, for your report, and we appreciate all that you do.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Item number four, an agenda is installment financing for vehicle and equipment.
Let me see if my slideshow will share. I'm sorry, hold on one second. Can you see it?
Yeah. Vehicle and equipment finance?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey.
Everybody see it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right.
The Franklin County Board of Commissioners and the 2019-2020 budget approved the purchase of two 2019 Dodge ambulances with stretchers for the EMS, thirteen 2019 Dodge chargers with equipment packages, twelve for the sheriff, and one for the jail, sixteen of the Lucas chest compression systems for the EMS, a 2019 Chevrolet Silverado for the inspections, a 2019 Ford Fusion for the Health Department, and a 2024 Escape for DSS. All of these vehicles were to be financed. The total amount to be financed is $1,206,633. The term is for four years, and the payment is once a year, like we've done in the past. The timeline for the financing was in March nineteenth, March the nineteenth, the county sent the request for proposals to fourteen financial institutions. On April the first, the county received responses to requests for proposals from four different institutions. On April the twentieth, the Board of Commissioners hopefully will adopt the resolution approving the financing and the documentation there too. And on May first, the county closes the installment funding. As you can see, this is our bid tab. With First Citizens coming in with the lowest interest rate of 1.75 and zero of its closing costs for the total financing cost of $53,072. It is my recommendation that the board, hold on one second, I apologize. Request for the Franklin County Board of Commissioners to award the vehicle financed in the amount of $1,206,633, the First Citizens Bank and Trust, at the interest rate of 1.75% for a term of four years, and that the county manager and the finance director to execute and deliver the required closing document. In addition, adopt the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an installment financing agreement, a security agreement, and related documents in connection with the financing of various vehicles and equipment for the county of Franklin, North Carolina. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? No questions, what's the pleasure, boy?
Your proof.
That move, that motion was made by who?
I spoke up, sir. Schreiber.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Speed, second. Any other questions? No other questions, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and it is so ordered. Thank you so much, Ms. Holtzman.
Thank you.
Item five on the agenda is update early college high school program. County Manager Angela Harris has provided an update underway to relocate the program to the Vance Gravel Community College Franklin County campus.
Yes, sir. Hard to believe, but our early college high school program is in its tenth year. When we first started the early college high school program, the county agreed to purchase the modular and with hopes that this would be temporary housing and we would move the program on the Gravel Community College. As everyone knows, we've been very successful with this program. In fact, we have one hundred and ninety-two students today. Unfortunately, over fifty percent of those students who would like to participate cannot because of program constraint. But our superintendent, Public School Superintendent Rhonda Shure, and President of the Community College Rachel DeMares have worked together to identify a solution so that we can move that program and those students onto the campus. Specifically, Building Five, the newest building, is a building that has been identified for the students to relocate. If all the details are found out to satisfaction of the Board of Commissioners, the Community College Board of Trustees, and our Board of Ed, the plan is to hopefully have those students relocated as early as this fall. At this juncture, the good news is the two entities would be able to do that within their respective budget, so that's good. The staff that are in Building Five would relocate to our modular. You might say, well, all of that sounds very positive, Angela. Well, and it is. I think that from the very beginning, we have wanted to have those students as a part of a college campus and part of that environment. The Board of Trustees with Vance Gravel Community College in February, in fact, February twenty-fifth, twenty-four, voted to move forward with this with certain conditions. They would like to be able to lease the modular for a period up to five years, but once we come into an agreement with them, within one year, they want the county to have plans for construction to expand facilities there on the Community College campus so that they can have their staff returned back to the campus and to be able to expand, particularly in programs like bio-processing, agriculture, and emergency services. So they're willing to have some of their staff come to the modular, and we actually be able to have an early college program on the campus as early as this fall. But again, they do want us to begin the serious planning of construction and within a five-year period to have construction completed and to be able to have their staff back on the main campus and have some expansion room for the programs that are named. Dr. Shure, and I believe Dr. DeMares, will be either virtually in attendance or present, depending on how our May fourth meeting goes, to talk with you further. But I think that's very positive news. They have worked brilliantly to come up with a plan that does not cost additional money. They're going to work with the budget that they have, and hopefully at the May fourth meeting, that will have all the answers to the questions that you may have. But I wanted to go ahead and put that out there tonight to let you know that there's been a lot of work underway, and hopefully we'll be able not only to relocate the program, but to be able to add the students that would like very much to be a part of the early college high school this year.
All right. Do I have any questions?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Oh, the way Mr. Ford.
Yes, if you, moving the early college school over to the community college, isn't that going to put them in a bind for space, or they got a lot of space extra?
They would actually be vacating an eleven-thousand-square-foot modular, move into a twenty-thousand-square-foot building, so that's going to give us room to grow the early college program. But we're going to have, they will lease the modular unit that we have our students in for some of their staff. They will move some staff around there on the campus, and some of the staff will move into the modular. So they are moving some staff around and will occupy the eleven-thousand-square-foot module. This is temporary, up to five, for them to have expanded space to add on to Building Five or to have an expansion of construction there on the campus so that they can move back on campus that are needed here in the county.
Okay. I hate to say this, but I hear everybody else pretty good, but on your end, it's a little choppy, a little choppy, but maybe that's just on my end. I don't know if anybody else hears this.
Well, I think it could be a little better. I noticed a little distortion, Angela.
Okay.
I don't know what the problem is, is there?
Okay.
All right. I have a question if we're done with audio.
Go ahead, Ms. Ford.
Yes, so, Ms. Harris, what I hear you not saying is basically my deduction, and that is that Vance Gravel Community College is wanting to let us move our early college program on their campus and evacuate space under the agreement that in five years, we build them additional facilities at the cost of the county. Is that in a nutshell correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in order to do that, what is that going to cost the county? What does this expansion look like? How many square feet is it? What's the cost? Because in commercial construction, a five-year window from inception of thought to product is pretty much a five-year window. So I would like, I would like to know some more because I don't recall hearing any of that discussion when we were so eager back in the early part, as you mentioned, in February of this board, supporting, moving forward with that. I was not under the understanding that there was, that there was this expectation of the county's taxpayers' money to build additional building or facilities on this campus. I'm pro-education, but I want to be told upfront what these decisions mean, when they're being begun, not as they get moved along. I want to hear what the total story is and what the total plan is, and I need it to be laid out in a way that it's very obvious, not where it's kind of discreet. And I've kind of gotten the impression here tonight that this is a very discreet sidebar conversation, and we don't want to say what I just said, which is they're allowing us to move into their building so that we can build them a building. And I don't mean that viciously, but that's the reality of my takeaway here.
Let me.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Have we lost Ms. Ford?
Yes. Oh, yes, let me know. We've lost.
I think we've lost Mr. Ford.
Is he coming back, or is he gone?
We need to pause to reconnect.
Yeah, why don't we pause for a moment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Let's just take, yeah, just a quick recess until Commissioner Ford has a chance to dial back in.
All right.
And I'll address the Commissioner Schreiber's issue.
All right. Can we do a motion for recess?
Second.
A move by Mr. Bun, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Second by Ms. Speed.
Yes.
Take a ten-minute, Kristen? Okay, she's gone.
Maybe just a five-minute recess.
Five minutes, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, Mr. Ford. All right. Okay, Mr. Ford, we got, Mr. Ford back. Mr. Ford, we on a five-minute break now, waiting for you to come back, okay? So we'll hold on just a second.
Well, like I say, that's not the first time this has happened, and it probably won't be the last.
Okay. The first time, what happened?
This computer keeps on shutting down, completely. I have to go through the whole login procedure and everything. No, I don't know why. This is the county laptop, so maybe that explains it.
Okay.
Didn't you get a new one like we did here?
Dude, why are you talking to me?
Yeah, didn't you get a new laptop?
I don't know if it's new, used. It's one that Coy brought down. He had to replace one of them already, so you tell me.
I don't know, I haven't seen yours.
I don't know. Ask Coy.
I would think that the problem's probably in the infrastructure that is in the lighting pieces.
The infrastructure and you.
Wifi.
I don't even think I'm running off the wifi, I'm wanting all the cable hooked right directly into anybody.
Is everybody back?
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion. Go back and open session. Ms. Jones, move.
Looks like we might have lost Mr. Ford. I'm sorry, nevermind. I was looking for Mr. Ford, there he is.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Move a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in session now. We're going back to County Manager Harris to respond to Mr. Schreiber.
Yes, sir. The specific request was for an addition to Building Five within the five-year period. So it would entail some discretion as to how large that addition is expected to be, and that's the type of information that hopefully we can bring back to you on your May fourth meeting. But it's not a whole new separate building.
So I guess, I guess what would be helpful is to have some type of written documentation of what we're really embarking upon, and not a recollection from a couple months ago meeting or a five-month ago meeting where we, this board, agreed to something. But to get something from you, the county manager, stating this is the plan, this is the program, A to Z, you know, they're going to allow us to do this, they're going to put their staff in our building, they're going to lease that building for five years, dollar amount of X per month or annually, whatever that is, and their expectation is for us to produce an addition of ten thousand square feet or whatever the square footage is at a projected cost of Y for the purpose of housing five offices, two classrooms, a whatever that may be, and that's going to cost projected cost, not today, but in five years, what that cost is going to be. So that as we move forward and govern the people's money, we're making decisions on a complete understanding of what we're moving forward to, and not just a step, one step at a time being known, but all steps being known when we begin the first step. So I don't want to walk into this agreement and move our children onto the campus without all these particulars being defined. I don't think that's very smart of us from a business perspective as county leaders to just kind of walk through this as we get there to each stop, but to know what each stop looks like and what each party has agreed to do during these stops to the finish line. So I would enjoy having something like that, that we can all have an understanding, not a reflective moment from months past.
Okay.
Does this sound reasonable?
Sure, sure. Yes, sir.
Thank you for that.
That will be included in your presentation for May fourth. I'm just giving you a precursor to that tonight.
I just know we have so many needs in our current schools, buildings as they are now. We've got a lot of things we've been putting money into to help them replace roofs and HVAC systems and these things that are going on. We've got a lot of growth in the county that's here and that's coming. We've got a brand-new, beautiful high school, Franklin High School, amazing facility that is one breath from being over-oculus. And we're not talking about that. And I think we need to weigh those needs along with a need like this. You know, I mean, just so that we can make the best use of what we have at the time we have. Thank you for that.
All right. Anyone else? All right, thank you so much. Chuck, Ms. Schreiber. Item six on the agenda is update for radio project. Ms. Harris?
Yes, sir. And we have, joining us tonight... Yes, sir. And we have, uh, joining us tonight, um, Mike Axford with Harris. We also have Nick Tusa, our consultant, that are available for any questions that you have. The board in its demand letter on February seventeenth had outlined specific defects that needed to be corrected. And a date was set of April thirtieth. Those deficits or defects were outlined and with the, uh, timetable of the thirtieth, work has been done and our consultant, Nick Tusa, has provided the board a brief page, uh, report in the form of a letter, giving you an idea of what corrective measures that have been undertaken. Um, in the public comments earlier tonight, it was noted that there were changes that had not yet been, uh, noticed out in the field. Some of that is because the radios had yet to be had software and hardware changes made to them. Harris was boots-on-the-ground starting this week out with fire departments. We had two fire departments where the radios, um, were, uh, made, adjustments were, were made. And throughout the last couple of weeks, they have developed corrective software for some of our XL200 radios and have a hardware change that our radios will have to be updated. So this is going to require hands-on. They have worked to identify UV lighting so that they can sanitize and work in this environment. But the consultant, Nick Tusa, has made it, um, clear that they have made progress on the items. One, two, four, and five have been resolved in large part. Some of the items that were listed will require work that has to be done, uh, in the next couple of weeks. Mr. Tusa recommended in light of COVID-19, which is the primary driver here and the delay in the schedule, that we move the date out for work to be completed to June eighth. And then he will inspect the work and would like to ask for a June nineteenth final deadline from which work can be inspected. You have, I provided you a copy of a letter. We will make it, uh, available, um, for the public as well, of Mr. Tusa's report of all the work that has been done to date and with the schedule of the different departments that they will be in over the course of the next few weeks. He and the staff at the staff level, we feel like that recommendation, um, is warranted in light of COVID-19. And Mr. Axford with Harris is here. And Nick Tusa is available also, our consultant, for any specific questions that you may have.
Does anyone have questions?
Yes, I have one. Uh, the two radios that you, uh, speak of that, uh, have been worked on, do they belong to Centerville Fire Department? I understand that they have been without two radios since December.
They've worked in two, uh, fire departments today, but I'm not aware.
There was due, uh, warranty repairs. So the radio was found hunched and we had to send them home to Harris to be repaired. My understanding was one came back and one is still being repaired, I believe.
Uh, Ms. Sharon said one, she, uh, understands has, has been returned, Commissioner Speed, and, um, one is being, is being repaired.
That spare radio was provided to them.
And I will say that the work schedule, uh, for their in-field activity that started today, they were going to the departments that were getting the worst audio distortion or drop calls. Hope to try to get to those first elements that have been identified and let that be the, you know, the truly the test, those that were having the most difficulty.
Okay, would, would that be, uh, Epsom, White Level? Well, and Justice, they're the ones that I get the most complaints from.
Epsom and Mitchner's were done.
Epsom and Mitchner's were done today.
White Level, they're later this week.
Yes, sir. And, uh, could you hear it, Miss?
How about, how about White Level and Justice? Uh, I receive a lot of complaints from that area.
Yes, sir. White Level later this week and Justice. Hold on one second. I'll, I'll, I'll look at the schedule just a moment. Yes, and, and we, I did send, um...
White Level on Thursday, Justice on Friday.
Justice on Friday, sir.
Tomorrow is Gold Sand and Centerville.
Tomorrow is what?
Gold Sand and Centerville.
Who's, who's, who's speaking here?
I'm sorry, Christie Sharon, our communications director.
That's Christie?
Yes, sir.
Voice sound a little distorted, but...
Yeah, I agree with that. I have a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
How much more time are they asking for? You may have said it, Angela, but I couldn't make it out.
Yes, sir, to June the eighth for the work to be completed. And then June nineteenth, between the eighth and the nineteenth, for our consultant to inspect the work.
Okay.
My question?
No, yeah, no disrespect to our consultant, but you know, the, the work is going to be inspect, inspected by the, uh, personnel in the field. Uh, if, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
And then what do we do then?
Well, we asked, uh, our lawyer something over here, what we did.
That's what, yeah, Nick, and we'll send them the, um, the other end of the demand letter that we sent them back several months ago, and then we'll say you have not complied with our demand letter. But you, but you got to realize, if we sign to sue them, uh, there was a lot of saying, well, we're going to sue them for $11 million. And this could take months. It's taken us five, five or six years just to get to where we are. Uh, so I said, put in Viper, but Viper has the same type of problems that Harris has from what, uh, Nick said, so...
Let's even get, let's, uh, hold a minute, uh, Pete. Let's even get Harry back, uh, for it. Go ahead, Pete.
But, I mean, that's a real problem when you get into, we can't afford to do without the Harris system because it's in there. You can't just pick it up and throw it out and have Viper put in. It, it would have to be designed, put in. It takes years to put these things together. So we're going to end up having to sue Harris, but to make them comply with what the contract is.
That was Chair.
I just wanted to verify with, um, Ms. Harris that the reason they're asking for the extension is because of the virus? Is that what they said?
That was, um, the, uh, information that our consultant gave us, that there was a delay, um, substantially, um, because of, uh, COVID and the travel restrictions and the federal guidelines and just getting into the field. In fact, uh, locally, uh, we have, uh, some departments that wanted to, to be, um, to have these changes made a little bit later instead of having, uh, personnel coming in even now here in, in the county. So we're trying to work with everyone's schedule, but, uh, Nick felt like, uh, a reasonable timeframe in light of the delays associated with COVID would be June eighth.
Mr. Chairman.
And then the last time we, we met was March the sixteenth, is that correct? And we specifically asked them to, to go and talk with, um, our departments in the northeast part of the county. Um, have they done that? I mean, I know, Christie, you said tomorrow is Gold Sand and I think you said Centerville. Uh, but have there been outreach before then? I mean, since March the sixteenth?
Yes, that, those meetings did take place and a report was sent into the Board of Commissioners on March the twentieth.
Okay, so this is a second round, is that what you're saying? Christie?
Uh, that wasn't Kristin responding, that was Maxler responding.
I, I mean, earlier, Christie.
This, what they're doing now is actually going out and modifying the radios, changing the hardware in the mobile and the software in the portable.
These are the fixes.
The fixes and the...
Mr. Chairman.
Just a minute, Mr. Shriver. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Uh, two questions, one for staff and one for Angela. The first question is, uh, in light of COVID-19, is it possible for them to be able to start with by June first meeting? First make a decision then about whether to go forward with any more liability?
Would, would it be possible for them to, to attend our June first meeting, the first meeting?
Uh, to come back with completion on June first instead of June eighth?
Right.
The, the way that the schedule works, if the work has, it, it will take till June eighth to get to all of the vehicles. You can only do so many radios in a day. So you're looking at at least six to eight weeks to get around to every radio in the county.
But that being said, will you be coming back on June eighth asking for more time?
Mike Axford's going to have to ask.
Yes, Mr. Axford will have to answer that question, but we're...
Well, I'll wait for the answer.
Yeah, we're, we're...
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand the question. Could you please repeat it?
The question is, you say you need to June eighth by you and Christie to finish the work. I'm saying is that absolute deadline June eighth or will you be asking for more time after that based on COVID?
But based on our schedule, that's where it's dropping out right now. So that's what we hope to get completion by.
And the COVID-19 is not an inferior to that schedule that you have, Mr. Axford?
Well, who knows what's going to happen moving forwards, you know? I mean, we, we've tried to take extra precautions over and above what is being required by this DDC, um, in terms of safety. Um, uh, it was mentioned earlier on that we have worked with Williams Communications to get, uh, some additional UVC sanitization lines to try the interior vehicles before we have people go in them. Uh, so all of that, it took time. Um, you know, I, I think the, the processes that have been put in place and, and documented to the county certainly are taking into account, they need to be extra careful. And I think, um, we are taking an approach that is accelerating the way that we can try and do these regular repairs with minimal risk. But of course, if things change, then the schedule may change.
Let me, let me raise, let me raise a question with you, uh, Mr. Axford, uh, going back to the question that was raised by Commissioner Speed. And as I heard in the special from the staff, is that there, uh, did I hear that there are two radios that, uh, you had, uh, Mr. Axford, in your possession since December?
That's the first I've heard of it. In fact, I tried to comment, but I was muted at the time. Um, yeah, Christie, if you get any details of those, I'll chase them up. I did, uh, text the, uh, folks that would have been involved with it, and they don't believe that we have any delayed return material authorizations. But I'll be happy to check into that.
What do you say about that, uh, um, Christie?
They were given too long, they were given a longer radio when we sent them off for repair like that.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
They were given replacement radios when they were taken out of service to be repaired. So they had two radios as replacement. They just hadn't gotten the new ones. The original ones back, I think is what you were trying to...
Well, they, they have those since December?
Uh, the one has come back since then. The other ones were shipped off after that. I don't know if that one's back yet. I'll have to find out from Brian.
Is that the word that you got, Mr. Speed?
That, that's just what, uh, someone told me. Uh...
All right, okay. All right, anyone else?
So what's being asked for the extension? Was it supposed to go to or what am I hearing? Well, it's because some of the Angela Harris, well, I can't understand, but he went...
Yes, sir, uh, that the board agreed to extend till June eighth, the deadline for the work to be completed, and then June nineteenth for Tusa and county personnel to provide a complete inspection and evaluation of all work product.
Now, Angela, I don't believe the board has agreed to that yet.
No, that's the request. That's the request.
Recommendation you made, you made.
So if they're not, yeah, if they don't have it by June eighth, what do we do then? Give another extension or?
Got my question. Got my question earlier.
Mr. Ford, I would suggest that, um, I'll get with Nick and we'll go ahead and start formulating a plan that if they do not have it completed by then, so we'll have the next step ready at that time.
Legal action.
And that way we'll have something on the table to, uh, present to you.
Mr. Chairman.
Now, now let, let, let's be clear about this, uh, Mr. Ford, the recommendation was that, uh, that they would have the, uh, correction by June eighth and that, uh, Nick Tusa would be given, as I understand it, uh, was it June eighteenth? June nineteenth to verify that the corrections have been made. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you get, get that, Mr. Ford?
Yeah, I hear the June eighteenth, yeah. And I just still wonder if not then, if everything's not fixed by then, what's our next step?
Mr. Chairman.
Something a little bit more aggressive, I hope.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shriver.
I would just suggest that if we're going to discuss our next step, potential steps, that that be done in closed session.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I agree. All right.
I do have one question, um, and I apologize for the late, uh, request, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've been told that there is all the Viper radios in county vehicles, i.e. some, some are all of our ambulances? Is there any fact to that?
Yes, there's a, there's a Viper radio in every ambulance. That's how they communicate with hospitals throughout the day.
Okay, so they have a Viper radio in their ambulance that allows them to talk throughout the hospital chain?
Yeah.
Do they have any problems in making this communication? Using these Viper radios to communicate with, attempting to, uh, to communicate with, similar to that which we were experiencing otherwise?
Not to my knowledge, but typically they're almost, they're en route to the hospital and probably within ten minutes of the hospital when they're using them. So I can't say for sure that those kinds of things are done in that area.
Has anyone given a thought um, out of service or, um, not actually a primary responding ambulance that's got a Viper radio and ride around the northeast part of the county and try and see if they have effective communications, uh, with, through this Viper product?
Well, we have Viper radios through the communication center that we could likely do that kind of testing.
I think it would just be curious to, to, to see, um, because I'm familiar with both, if the Viper really has a superiority, uh, in the areas where we're experiencing such difficulty. Because that to me is, you know, that, that testing of itself is speaks, will speak volumes.
I, I would be limited to not being able to test indoors. I would only be able to test outdoors.
Well, well, you could go in, and I don't mean this crudely, but I mean, you could go into convenience stores or, um, you know, the, the EMS stations or the fire stations, post metal buildings, things, to see if you can, you know, see what kind of communication you have there. I just think it would be primary thing, but while we're out and about maybe to take in the opportunity to, uh, do a radio test to Riley or Wake Med or whoever, um, you know, we just call it radio check. And they're come back 10-1 or 10-2, you know, either you're good or you're not. I mean, that's just my, my limited experience, 20-plus years in public service.
Okay.
Thank you.
That, uh, I would certainly recommend, uh, Krista, that you, uh, ex, uh, exercise that test. If that's something that you can do, be on the ground, then I would certainly ex, uh, recommend that you do that. Um, because, uh, obviously we can't depend on Axford to do what he's supposed to do. So if you, if you would do that, that would be good. Okay? I didn't get a response.
Yes, sir, I care of it.
All right, thank you.
I, I, yeah.
Well done, Chairman.
All right. Um, any other questions about the radio system? Mr. Ford, did you have some?
No, I don't have any further questions, just hopefully it gets fixed here soon.
Okay, all right, um, item seven, other business?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
I I do uh want to make sure that the board is amenable with those, um.
Okay, the extension?
Yes, sir.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board on the extension?
I move to approve.
I get a second?
Thank you.
Move the, uh, Mr. Shriver a second, by Mr. Bun. Uh, any questions? No questions, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
No.
Okay, uh, one no, Mr. Speed is a no. Ayes, ahs, and ahs, so ordered. All right? We move to the item number seven, other business?
Mr. Chairman, I have uh a topic to share, discuss.
Yes, sir, go right in.
Um, I'd like to s- to um to have a little dialogue with regards to the curfew. I've I've had several phone calls regarding the impotation, implementation of our curfew, which occurs, I believe, from nine PM to six AM, if I'm not mistaken. Um, I try to explain to some some of our, you know, our citizens that when we go into a state of emergency, when the when the federal government declares and when the state governor declares a state of emergency. There's certain protocols that come into play that are indirectly mandates um by the federal government. That if we don't enact certain things, we're not eligible for FEMA support dollars or other federal support dollars. Um, and so it's important that we follow along these certain unspoken guidelines in order that we can um protect our citizens and our and our and our county treasury. Um, by being eligible for these these federal fundings and state dollars that sometimes come from the federal government down to the state and then from the state we solicit for our portion of us. So no, if if enacting the curfew, because that was a question that came back to me and I didn't know the answer to it. Was this curfew that we implemented, does it in any way, shape or form, um, uh, make us ineligible? For any type of federal dollars or state monies that may be out there that we could use to better uh support our 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 county and our citizens?
Okay.
Can can anyone answer that for me?
Would you like to? The, at all?
Yes, sir, I I'm not aware of the curfew causing any eligibility. The recommendation, um, that was discussed and recommended at the EOC level. And the sense of urgency surrounding it uh had to do more with cleaning the spread of the virus and saving lives.
Sure. Sure, I I understand.
And I can I can address it from my perspective, uh, Mr. Shriver, uh, is that, uh, and and contrary to uh reports that you may have seen or heard on social media.
I don't do social media, so I don't give my information there just without.
No, no, I'm I'm not speaking this just for you, Mr. Shriver. I'm speaking this for everybody who's on social media, okay? You might not do it, but uh a lot of your.
Several others do.
Yes, exactly, okay? Uh, the fact of the matter is, was that in the week that the uh curfew was uh implemented, uh, was the week that the our our case numbers uh tripled, if you will. Uh, and the fact that uh the the emergency uh executive order number one twenty-one had been issued by the governor. And the reports that uh we received uh from the sheriff and his deputies uh about gatherings that were around the county. Uh, in the the parking lots, so the shopping centers, in uh food trucks, having house parties in uh subdivisions. And those things that that he addressed, uh, I felt that it was in the best interest of the uh welfare of saving lives. Uh, in Franklin County, that uh the nine to six would be the most uh amenable uh curfew that we could implement. To save the the lives of the citizens of Franklin County. Now, if indeed that if if those reports had not come back, that the uh shelter in place orders were being violated, if they had not been violated. Then, of course, the curfew would not have come into the picture.
I understand. Um, the second thing that I wanted to to share, and you shed a little light on that with your comments, and I I respect them. Because I did also share with people that once the state of emergency occurs, a lot of a lot of additional responsibilities fall on our chairman. Um, and and they and they become a a single decision maker. And they're they're, uh, you know, given a lot of information because there's so much there that you're kind of the one that's receiving all of it.
Yeah.
And then you've got to make that independent decision, that's why you're our chairman. Um, and so I thank you for all your hard work, because I know it's not been easy, this has been a very long three or four weeks for you, so.
Absolutely.
So much for your honeymoon sale, a tour. For us military men, we understand that. Um, so the one thing that I want to point out here, because this is what I've not heard tonight, um. Is that none of the scenarios that have been offered, including yours regarding uh some of the neighborhood gatherings and the food trucks and things like that. And none of the scenarios that uh Mr. Levine, our our health department, our health director, has shared. Um, none of those advanced activities have occurred during the nine PM to six AM timeline. All these are more daytime, five, six, seven o'clock timelines. Um, so I just, I just wonder if if we need to adjust this curfew and make it have more teeth or more impact? A, B, do we even need it at all? It it are are our numbers, while they're unfortunate, are they so proportionally uh not risen that this may no longer be necessary? Um, curfews in a lot of locations, in the research I've went online and found. They state that they're very, very effective in highly trafficked urban areas, and we obviously all know that. If you, you, where there's density, that's where concern really is, that this staying place is so, so critical. Because people traffic the same exact places the moment they walk out of the door of their home, wherever that is. Um, and in Franklin County, we're not an urban area, we are a pretty much rural rural community uh of sixty some thousand people. So just want us to to think about what the effect of this curfew is, if it really has uh traction at this point moving forward? Or at what point does it no longer have traction? Um, and again.
Well, I think.
Realizing that you have an enormous amount of information that's not been shared, you know, to us. You know, I respect your decision to do it, I just want to ask, you know, are are is this something we need to continue to do, and if so, for how long?
Well, I think uh that that uh, um, Mr. Levine made that clear, and if you, the numbers that were published, of course, are early on in this process. If we did nothing, that uh we could expect a half of our uh population to indeed to uh be affected by the the virus. Uh, uh, in itself, uh, so in 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 order to be able to address uh those uh issues and those predictions that might happen. Even in uh rural Franklin County, uh, those numbers to me are frightening, to think that uh uh half of our population. Could indeed be affected and be diagnosed with this virus. Now, uh, I I certainly, I I I look at the situation uh under the same principle that if I were, um, if I had the uh the flu. And I was given a a twenty day supply of antibiotics. And all of a sudden, after five days, I started feeling better, I stopped taking, well, I I don't think that would be very smart on my part. Uh, nor do I think at this point, from nine to six, um, you you say that that weren't, that that wasn't, didn't affect the people that were gathering, but I I challenge that. Uh, those were some of the times that the people were gathering. Uh, was at doing those actions, uh, from six to six. But we 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 looked at it and and in order to make it less uh intrusive, uh, the nine to six uh uh hour. Uh, I felt was more appropriate, uh, to try to eliminate those people who were gathering. Uh, in those spaces that uh that were not, uh, were not good for them.
Well, do we, do we, so the gathering, if the gathering is the issue, which I keep hearing that come up, and and I agree, you know, we don't need people hanging out in groups during this time. And then going and hanging out with another group tomorrow and spreading whatever may be there. Um, is there something we can do to create some type of um ordinance or governance under this state of emergency? That would give our law enforcement the ability to disperse and expand uh a gathering without saying that at four o'clock in the morning, uh, someone gets off work? Or an EMS worker gets off, has a long shift and stays out, a state trooper arrests somebody at twelve o'clock at night for drunk driving, and they're supposed to be going home at one o'clock. Well, now they're processing that person, they're not getting off till three thirty in the morning, they haven't had dinner or anything else, and they can't stop even at a convenience store. Because at nine o'clock, they're even closing, because we have a curfew says, you shall not. Uh.
No.
Do we have another tool, other than a blanket tool, that says every citizen, regardless of who they are or where they are, shall not? Do we have another tool in our toolbox that we can use to to manage this gathering issue?
That's not what the 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 order says. You know, the the prevention is, if you're going about your, um, your work, if you are performing a duty, a work duty. Then yes, you you, it that this doesn't affect you at all. Uh, but if you are just gathering for a a social gathering, and it's been determined that social distancing is the only. Uh, a a method that we have against this virus that we know of now, okay? So it to say that, uh, uh, the example of the Harvard Trojan or whoever, but if you're going about, and I received calls, of course, of the first week. And as I explained to one of the gentleman. The the idea is to try to prevent, uh, those persons who were not obeying the executive order in the first place. Uh, for gathering at times that uh it was felt that it would be less intrusive, uh, less, less, uh, uh, in intrusive to your personal, a person's personal life. You know, uh, so that that was the reason that that was. Yes, uh, Mr. Dickerson?
Yes, I just want to say I agree with. I'm with him and that we're looking for the least way to be invasive, we're not looking to try to enforce people. We're trying to nudge people in the right direction so we can prevent some of these large social gatherings, small social gatherings. Like you said, just meet somebody at the mailbox, it's something that you don't think about. Um, you know, I have, uh.
Yes, sir, I also respect your own, uh, teaching. To be notified is way different than email at four four three five on a Friday afternoon. Or something that's gonna take effect on Sunday at nine PM. With our constituents bombarding us with questions, and every one of them thinks that we're sitting here, we voted on it, we did this and that. It, and it doesn't give a lot of time for businesses to prepare, uh, letters for their essential workers, because they're scared they're gonna get pulled over or whatever. You know, something as simple as a text or a phone call or anything else, you know, I heard it on the news before I knew we had a curfew even going in effect. I just saw, wish, it, I believe it could have been handled a little bit different as far as getting the word out to us, so we wouldn't get bombarded.
All right. Okay. Well, well taken. Mr. Speed?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, uh, a little bit to your statement, uh, concerning those that are not affected. Uh, it would be people getting food or pharmaceuticals or medical care are also, uh, not affected by this curfew.
But stores are closing because of the curfew at nine o'clock, so you can't get food, you can't get fuel, you can't get.
No, no one's.
Uh, the pharmacy.
No, no one's, no one has instructed a store to close.
Well, I understand, we didn't instruct anybody, we just placed an order out, and this is the, this is the community's, part of the community's um understanding of it. And I realize we can't help everybody understand everything. But in the same respect, this is the message that they're perceiving. So if we, if we need to clarify that, maybe then, you know, that would be good too, to help.
Well, as just for clarification, if that's needed, definitely no one who is engaging in their employ, okay, which stores would be. Is indeed in any way, um, expected to uh stop performing uh their uh responsibilities as a race relates to their employment.
Yeah, so in the order, it didn't, it didn't say that non-incessional businesses are ordered to close during these times?
No, no, not at all. As a matter of fact, the 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 uh curfew was actually in line with the executive order, one twenty-one.
Right.
And what is said, and that's why it ran along those those timelines.
Sure, it's understandable.
Okay.
Well, I guess that just goes to show you need to, you know, communicate with other people on actions taken, you know, maybe some of these misconceptions could be avoided.
Well, uh, Mr. Ford, and the rest of the of the of the board, and the citizens, I I take full responsibility for that. But you gave me when the exec, when the emergency orders were issued, you gave me that responsibility, so I took it.
No, we're, I I don't want this to sound like I'm not supporting you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not, it's not, it's not a matter of not supporting you. It's just a matter of learning a little bit more and getting a better understanding so that we can then, or that I can then answer these questions well informed.
I can appreciate that.
Well informed, you know, and and so, so maybe one takeaway is, segue in with what Commissioner Bunce said. Is if we're gonna take some of these more critical steps, that maybe there's something, there's information that's shared with us that maybe you had to be able to form that that decision. That we can, that helps us communicate your decision better.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, I I I'm all about being supportive of our group, without question.
Absolutely, okay? Be glad, be glad to share that with anyone, and some of you called me, of course, and and we explained uh our position to you. And if others of you called, I would have done the same thing with you.
Very good, and and rightfully so, I did not call you.
Yes. All right, um, any other business? All right, no other business, then we'll go move to, uh, item number eight on the agenda, Board Managing Clerk comments. Madam Clerk here today?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to um thank our commissioners and thank our entire staff for pulling together this meeting. We've done, um, a lot of information gathering, a lot of testing, a lot of practices, and I think for the most part, the meeting went well tonight. I expect that our next meeting on May fourth will most likely be held in the same fashion. And at some point in the near future, we're gonna have to be um discussing uh budget sessions and that type of thing, and how we want to go back, go about those meetings in the midst of COVID nineteen. And so we'll be bringing forward those recommendations soon, I'm sure, but just really wanted to to express my appreciation for our entire staff for working together. Um, as you all know, every decision that's been made by our leadership has sometimes had to be made very quickly. And um, so I I just appreciate that, because I know it's been very stressful. But I certainly appreciate our IT staff tonight for pulling all of this together for us, helping us to broadcast the meeting on YouTube and providing every option that we could provide. So that the public could view the meeting tonight and uh to also offer their public comments and to be informed. So I just, I appreciate that, thank you so much to Koi Floyd and to Barry Thorpe for um pulling all of this together tonight.
And thank you, uh, Kristen King, for all that you've done and pulling this together tonight.
Yes, sir.
Very diligent and very effective, and to the IT team as well. Mr. Ford?
Uh, yes, I would say I'd like to make comment on, in these last thirty days, sixty days, I've heard so many conflicting stories about the the coronavirus. And everything from masks to no mask. Uh, I've kept all three stores running clear till ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night. Been in contact with thousands and thousands and thousands of people. of people. My myself, I work at the registers at all three stores and we don't, can't always maintain six foot of distance when you're trying to take money from somebody. But uh, I thank the Lord for looking over us.
How about receive money, Mr. Ford? Don't take it.
Well, I mean, you gotta do it. You can't do it electronically. I mean, don't even do that in Food lines or Sam's or anywhere, you know, and you still have to hand them money, you know what I mean? Anyway, but uh, the point I'm trying to make is, I've been around a lot of people, thousands of customers, and I go to many, many retail outlets every evening picking up goods and supplies, everything going just fine here, just fine. Sometimes I I hopefully can get out of this, you know, back to work, get things going, get back to regular meetings. And I think if it keeps on going like it is, it's gonna cause more harm than good. This country's gotta get going, gotta get back like it was. We can't stay like this. But uh, like I say, I pray and for good health that I always have even before this and hopefully will even after this. But it's my opinion, hopefully this gets sewn over, we can suspend and get back to normal because I think that's what this country and the state and this county desperately needs. That's all I have for right now.
Mr. Bunce?
The only comment I would like to say is I'd like to thank staff for making it possible. It's a, it's a pretty neat way to have a meeting and uh I think everybody did a good job.
Thank you. Round of eyes, Chair?
No comment.
Mr. Schreiber?
Just echoing the same praises uh that my colleagues have offered. Um, it's good and I'm grateful that we have a good team to put this together and to do, and our support staff does an excellent job.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Uh, brief comment. I want us to make sure that we understand this is a very serious virus. It causes death. We need to be about doing all we can to save lives. I heard not about radio communication saving lives, vehicles, nuke saving lives, emergency cars saving lives. So anything we need to save lives is important to citizens of Franklin County and state law and law and nation. I'm looking forward for us to get back to business, working, and our working class go back to work. They're important to me. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we are ready, able, do this at a time that is designated by people that are not smarter than me, who understand that we can move forward, protect the economy and save lives. Thank the staff and wish you all well. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Speed?
No comments.
Our manager?
Yes, sir. I um, I wanted to end on a very positive note and say um, I'm excited to hear the news that the county of Lewisburg has been awarded a two point four million dollar grant for their industrial park, infrastructure, water store, and entrance and roadway improvement um out at the industrial park. So hats off to the the town uh for receiving from Rural Infrastructure Authority a two point four million dollar grant. I'm very, very happy for them.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, I want to to thank uh Ms. Harris and her staff, those of you who are in the conference room there. Thank you for the great job that you've done to help also in the ability for us to uh pull off this uh Zoom meeting. Uh, as I said, uh, in the beginning of the uh of the meeting tonight, this is a historical moment uh in the life of Franklin County. We've never uh met this way before. And of course, we wouldn't have been not been for the coronavirus, we would not have ordered uh this meeting to be done this way tonight. But uh, there are some things that you have to do uh when situations present themselves. No one in this world, I don't believe, ordered coronavirus to indeed to invade our nation, to invade our world. So the only way that we can indeed to address the issue is by following the the uh recommendations of the science that indeed that that would help us to prevent uh or to help us to rid ourselves of the virus. Now, uh, you know, this is a matter of life and death, whether, I don't care if you have met a thousand people and you have uh haven't gotten the virus yet. Your chances are that you might be carrying it. You don't know that. And so we try to do everything that we can, and I encourage everyone to do everything that you can. My prediction is, is I believe that when this is over, I believe that all things work together for good for those who love the Lord. And I believe that we are going to be even better as a result uh after this is over than we were before. So I I thank each one of you for the confidence that you have placed in me. Uh, and I uh uh certainly take an advisement of the suggestions that you've made as relates uh to those decisions that were made uh in, I felt in the best interest of the citizens of Franklin County. Thank you again. We'll now, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Schreiber, did you make the motion?
Yes, sir, I did.
And who's second?
Second.
Mr. Speed, has been moved and properly second. Are there any questions? No questions? All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Ayes have it and a so ordered.
So ordered. Good night, everyone.
Good night.